We're on, sir.
Are you ready in the back there?
Let me give the okay. All right.
Hi, Keith.
This is unbelievable. We've got Rosenhansky here for study session.
We'll call the Newport Beach City Council's study session for August 11th, 2009 to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that council members Gardner and Daigle are absent and they have excused absences.
Okay, first item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilman Hen.
Could you start with somebody else?
Councilman Webb.
Yes, I've talked over with Mr. Batum and item number 18 related to sale of property, I think should be continued because there's some issues that need to be worked out.
And we'll do that at the appropriate time.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Curry.
No items.
Councilman Rosenhansky.
None, thank you.
Councilman Hen.
None, thank you.
I have one, not to put anyone on the spot, but on item 20, I think it's 20 or is it 19, item 19, looking for volunteers for this committee. I neglected to solicit any prior to the meeting. It's the unscheduled vacancy on the building and fire board of appeals, need an ad hoc appointments committee.
Is it supposed to be for?
Yeah.
I didn't see council members were on that.
No, we have to interview, don't we?
Oh, you're trying to interview.
We're interviewing.
Interview.
We're interviewing.
Oh, then we're definitely not interested.
Okay, I'll be honored if we can do it after the first of September.
Okay. Any other volunteers?
Which item number is this?
Item number 19.
Oh, 19, I'm looking at 20.
Painful to do this right here. Usually I can twist arms behind the scenes.
You have two council people who aren't here.
I think Nancy and Leslie, I heard Nancy and Leslie were interested in this.
Nancy Gardner would be a good second.
I'm not sure when was the last time Councilwoman Daigle was on one of these committees. Perhaps she would be.
Okay, we'll take a chance there.
We haven't scheduled the date for the interviews yet.
No, if there's a need to make a change, we can make a change, but that'll be the action. Councilman Curry, you need to fill those names in when you make the motion tonight.
So who was that, Daigle?
Webb, Gardner, and Daigle.
What happens when you don't show up? Excused or not.
That's what happens, you don't come to the meeting.
That's why I'm here today.
You're going to point it to a committee.
I saw there were blanks to be filled in.
Okay, moving on to item number two, the Central County Corridor Major Investment Study.
Tony Bryant is going to lead off an introduction of this presentation.
Good afternoon, council. We have Tammy Warren from OCTA here today. She'll be making a presentation on the status of this study. Just before the presentation begins, I wanted to let you know what staff's involvement has been. We've been attending technical working group meetings for this project. There have been 10 meetings to date, and as they've been progressing through the project, looking at different alternatives, we've been attending these meetings and following that process. And also, we've been able to review a draft of the study to date, and primarily what we're looking for in this study is to make sure that all of the improvements or different things that are within the study are consistent with our general plan, and so far, we're making sure that the general plan traffic study and improvements are in that plan, and we'll continue to do so until the plan is complete, or the project is complete. So without any additional talking on my part, I'll just pass it off to OCTA to make the presentation.
Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Warren, and I'm with the Orange County Transportation Authority, and thank you very much for having me here today. My purpose of coming is to kind of give you an update on where we are to date, let you know that the process is, we are going through the process, and to make sure that you're aware, and I hope to be able to come back again with more information as we move through this process. So to start off with, I just want to kind of remind you of the study area. The Central County Corridor Study Area is bounded by Ball Road at the north, the 55 freeway at the, I'm sorry, Ball Road at the west, no, where am I? The 55 freeway on the south, Pacific Coast Highway on the west, Beach Boulevard on the north.
The other way.
Yeah, you know, I'm confused. Okay, so there we have it. It's Ball Road at the top, we've got the 55 freeway to the right, Pacific Coast Highway at the bottom, and Beach Boulevard on the left there. As you can see, there's a lot of major employers and hospitals and all kinds of employment base in the study area that we are considering as we move through this process. So let me start out, what is a major investment study? It's a integrated transportation planning, public outreach, and technical process, and the idea is that as we move through and look at different alternatives and different concepts for improvements, we need to make sure that we integrate what makes sense technically with what makes sense from a public input standpoint, because you might have a great project that, from a technical standpoint, but if the public doesn't support it, you really aren't going to be successful. So it's a big process. At the end of the day, our goal is to come out with what's called a locally preferred strategy, and that locally preferred strategy will be multimodal, so we expect to have some transit improvements, we expect freeway and streets and roads types of improvements in the process. And the whole purpose is to kind of, we're looking out to the year 2035 and saying, where do we want to be in the year 2035? What do we need to get there? There isn't any funding set to these concepts or strategies that we come up with, some of them maybe, because we have some that are included in our Measure M2 program, but for the most part, it's setting a blueprint so that we know where we want to go, so then as state and federal funds become available, we can go after those funds. We use this arrow slide because it helps to show how it's a narrowing process. You start broad with all kind of options and any ideas that people have had through the years on the table, and any new ideas, and as we go through the process and technically look at them, and also, from a public standpoint, look at the different scenarios, they start to fall out. Things that don't, you know, don't rise to the top from a technical standpoint, we find fatal flaws, or they just don't do what they need to do for the amount of money it costs, they start to drop out, as well as things that don't have public support. And you narrow this down, we're currently in the middle stages of this, we're trying to develop right now our reduced set of alternative strategies, so we started with an initial set, we're narrowing them down, I'm going to share with you what that initial set of strategies is, and then at the end, you come out with that locally preferred strategy. We hope to be there early next year, is our goal, and to complete this project in the spring of next year. The study is guided by a committee process. We have a policy advisory committee, which is made up of elected officials from each of the study area cities. At this time, we don't have a Newport Beach representative. I know you're kind of on the, you know, the end of the study area, but I know that your staff has been working very closely with us and making sure that your interests are represented. We have that technical working group, which Tony Bryant, who spoke earlier, is on that technical committee and attends regularly and provides input, and then we have a stakeholder working group, which is made up of kind of community and business leaders, homeowners associations, anyone who really wants to know what's going on. So these three committees provide input that ultimately goes to our OCTA board for their recommendation and their decision. So let's talk about what those refined alternative strategies are. We always start with, of course, a baseline. The baseline is kind of what would happen if we did nothing other than what's currently on the table, what's currently funded when we look out to the year 2035, so that's our baseline. Then in Strategy A, that's our transportation systems management, transportation demand management strategy, that is saying, okay, what can we do tweaking the system, adding signal coordination, maybe some bus turnout, some right turn pockets, left turn pockets, some more transit, whatever we can do that's more at the lower end or lower cost types of improvements, and see how far that can take us. Then we build on that, and we go to Strategy B, and Strategy B has some transit in there, increased some of our go local programs, that's part of our original Measure M, and it also includes the Measure M Freeway Plan, which is one kind of widening of the 55 freeway, widening of the freeways within the existing right of way, or mostly within the existing right of way, so it's kind of a lower end freeway improvement. On the arterial side, we have a completion of the master plan of arterial highways. Again, that's included in our Measure M2. Then from there, you either go to Strategy C or Strategy D, so up to this point, they're cumulative. At Strategy C, this is taking the emphasis and saying, you know what, we need to do more than just Measure M, what if we were to do a major widening of the 55 freeway? This would go outside of the existing right of way, there are concerns, obviously, from the communities that live along that freeway. What would that buy us, or how, you know, how would that help the system? And then the other alternative is, instead of focusing on the 55, what if we looked at the 57 and extended the 57 freeway down the riverbed? And I'm sure that's not new to you, we've heard about this type of a concept through the years, for many, many years. Our latest, we were directed by our board based on community and political feelings on this, that we were not to do anything up high on structure, that we needed to look at things like possibly going underground, so we have some scenarios that are looking at tunneling underneath. We also have a low structure alternative, that's an arterial structure, and I'll talk about those in just a second. And then finally, we have Strategy E, which we call our Kitchen-Sink Strategy, it's kind of everything piled in to see what that does for us, it's our bookend strategy, it gives us a picture of what the system would look like if we did a lot. So back to Strategy D, the 57 extension, you can see the numbers here, D3, 4, 7, and 8 don't add up, because there were others, 1 and 2, that were eliminated, 5 and 6, but the ones that are still on the table, or we are still looking at, was a freeway cut-and-cover tunnel and a dual bore tunnel. The first three, actually D3, 4, and 7 are pretty much the same thing, different construction techniques on the cut-and-cover and the dual bore, and then D7 is an unconstrained, meaning one of our board members said, well, if we're going underground, do you have to follow the Santa Ana River? Maybe it makes sense to take the alignment and go down harbor, or down a different, you know, alignment, to see if that would make it work any better or do better. Obviously, with these tunnels, what we're trying to do is lessen the impacts to the community, and having said that, yes, you're underground for most of it, but you still do need to get into the ground and out of the ground, which in those areas, there will be visual and impacts in those cases. The final scenario there, D8, is a bridge-level arterial that was saying, well, if we don't want to go up high because it's too intrusive, what if you kept it low and took an off-ramp off the 57, and you actually went down the riverbed, and you crossed all of the bridges that currently cross the 57, I mean, the Santa Ana River, and you provided intersections at each of those? So it would be basically providing a new arterial, six lanes, three in each direction, that would provide a new access point for people and spread the load a little bit. So those are the scenarios we're looking at in Strategy. Where we are right now, as I mentioned, we are currently, we ran models, we've been looking at how these different strategies perform, trying to determine if they make sense. We've been working with our technical working group, as I mentioned, we went to our policy advisory committee, and we have kind of a set schedule here, our hope is that we're going to go to our OCTA board in September, so next month, with a recommended reduced set of strategies. And just to give you a little picture, the D strategies going down the 57 extension are not really showing very much promise. Because you're tunneling, you're restricting the access points, so you're limiting the amount of cars that can really benefit from going that way, and the impacts because of the daylighting issues, as I mentioned, are pretty great. The arterial strategy, although it actually performs really well, it's very costly, and the cost-benefit ratio, as we look at that, as we move through the process, is not showing us a lot of promise there. And then the alternative C, which I mentioned, which was the major widening of the 55 freeway going outside the existing right of way, again, not performing as well as it should or would to move it forward. Instead, Alternative B, which is the Measure M alternative, is looking really good, so that looks like kind of where we're headed, and then there'll be different elements that we're in C and D, and then also E, that'll probably rise to the top and move forward, so just to give you a little taste of that. And then finally, I just want to mention that you, we have the 55, something that might be of interest to you, the 55 Access Study that was taken, that took place last year, that showed some different alternatives for how to extend the 55 freeway down Newport Boulevard, that is included in the study, and will be continued to look at, will be trying to come up with some, you know, some information on how it models and what it shows. We aren't defining what that will look like in this study, just that it's something that needs to be in place at some point as we go through to the year 2035. And then the last one is the 19th Street Bridge, that is also part of the study, so I just wanted to mention this, too. So that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Hen.
So if Alternative B is the one that's looking more and more likely, can you just quickly run through, I can't read this, what's included in Strategy B?
Sure. Strategy B is Measure M2, so it's additional freeway widenings, but within the existing right of way, so the 55 freeway would have an additional lane. It also, from an arterial standpoint, it's a completion of the master plan of arterial highways, so those roads that are on the different cities' general plans to be widened ultimately, that is something that we're saying, the sooner you do that, the better, so it's something, and that is also included, funding is included as part of our Measure M2 program. And within there, there's also some transit projects, go local, some of the cities have provided, you know, scenarios for different, better connections to MetroLink, so those are being packaged as part of B. And as we move to the next level, we'll be pulling different elements, so there's a lot of different things that will be included that aren't necessarily in B right now, that as we repackage these to look at a reduced set, there'll be a lot of different projects that will move forward.
So is the 19th Street Bridge in B presently?
The 19th Street Bridge is in B, yes.
Okay, and the extension of the 55 freeway, or whatever the solution is through Costa Mesa, then that's part of B as well?
It was actually part of C, but it will be something that will be pulled out to be continued to be studied.
And Tammy, if I may follow up on that question, you said maybe a widening of the 55, for what length of highway?
We're looking at between the 22 freeway and the 405, so there's some auxiliary lanes and different widening at the southern end, as well as some additional full lanes as you go through that.
Is Huntington Beach or Costa Mesa weighed in on the 19th Street Bridge as part of Strategy B?
Yes, and as you can imagine, there's some concern there, so, but they're...
Seven, no?
They've weighed in, but yeah, they're not, there's some concerns there.
Very attached with the word.
Very. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this item?
Just mayor, maybe just one more question, so what kind of timing are we looking at, Tammy, and firming something up here in terms of a direction?
At the end of, I'd say in October timeframe, I'll probably be coming back out to share with you some of the reduced set, what's been selected to move forward, and then my hope is by the spring of next year, we'll be kind of wrapping up that locally preferred strategy, coming back again to say, how do you feel about this end package?
Thank you. Okay, seeing no public comment on this item, we'll move on to our next item, which is number three, changes to the Newport Beach Municipal Code, 11.08.010, obstructions on public beaches prohibited, and 11.08.020, use of concealing umbrellas prohibited.
Good afternoon. I'm Captain Dale Johnson. As you may recall, I brought the first draft of this ordinance to you during study session on May 26th. That version of the ordinance was a much more restrictive version than what you have before you today. That one proposed prohibiting the use of awning EZ Up type of devices on the beaches or parks, and to limit the shade devices to a single pole or essentially an umbrella. You instructed me at that point to come back and rework the project, and to take a look at a less restrictive version of the ordinance that would meet the needs of the community, as well as our visitors that's come down to the beach. What you have before you today is a result of that reworking. This ordinance, if I may, it provides a couple of different options. First of all, it limits the size of the devices, the EZ Up awnings that we're referring to. I think that's one of the key components of this ordinance. I've been down to Corona del Mar Main Beach numerous times this summer, including on Fourth of July, and it is not an unusual occurrence to see 30 by 30 awnings, plus in size, that are on the beaches, taking up a tremendous amount of space, there's usually chase lounge type of chairs inside, large tables, sometimes for very small families, it gives them an opportunity to save that portion of the beach. So I think that the size that we're requesting, which is a 10 by 10, 100 square foot awning, is a reasonable size, it's somewhat common size that these types of devices are purchased in. The language in the ordinance itself allows for a total of 100 square foot width of shade, and that's if you combine more than one device together. If you have two that are 50 square foot each, and you put them together for a combined total of 100 feet, that would meet the requirements of this ordinance. The other component of the ordinance that you have before you is the number of side panels, is how we refer to it. Many of these devices, they have fabric or other sort of material that actually shade the side, or two sides at a time, up to three or four sides at a time of the awning or the EZ Up itself. The purpose of that is as the sun moves, the shade is projected into different areas, and this allows you to blot out the sun when it's on one side or the other. That's an area that is very, very subjective. Many of the other agencies near us, Huntington Beach, they stick with two sides in order to restrict the number of panels. Laguna Beach at this point does not restrict the number of panels, nor does Crystal Cove. So they allow up to three sides, although all of the ordinances from our neighbors restrict the tents, meaning that all four sides cannot be fully closed. What we were looking for here in recommending the number of side panels, essentially, was to see what met the needs of staff, and also to allow, again, some shade for our visitors come to the beach. We feel that two side panels allows us to have visibility, both from the lifeguard standpoint into the water and into the other lifeguard towers, as well as the police department being able to see inside of these enclosures, to ensure that there's no alcohol use, narcotic use, or other unlawful activity occurring. As I mentioned before, this ordinance is very, very similar to the other communities. Laguna Beach restricts the size of the shade material to six by six. I understand that that might be in flux right now, because they're having some legal challenges to that, but right now, they restrict it to a six by six shade device. Huntington Beach, theirs is very, very similar to ours, is 10 by 10 or 100 feet with two side panels. Other components of this ordinance, one, we require the user to remove the awning or the EZ Up if it interferes with the visibility of the lifeguards, if they have any trouble seeing the lifeguard towers or the ocean, which is their primary duty, and it also leaves a right of way for emergency vehicles to access the beach, they're not allowed to set these up within 50 feet of that right of way. We've done some community outreach in order to get some feedback from the community. Probably one of the areas which we've gotten the greatest amount of feedback involves a number of side panels. And again, it's somewhat subjective, and we are looking for direction from the council in terms of how you'd like us to proceed before we actually bring this to a council meeting. One discussion for less side panels is that the EZ Ups or the awnings can be manipulated so that one side or the other, the legs can be lowered, and that provides you that shading or that ability to keep the sun out in that fashion, and that the side panels are not necessary. In terms of staff feedback, there have been a number of items which have been brought up since we published this, I got it on the agenda, that we also intend to rework before bringing it back to you. One of those issues was to try to create an exception for city use. Recreation Department, I think even the Fire Department, and junior lifeguards, you know, they often will set up a series of these while doing city activities, city business in the beaches and the parks, and that's one that we would add to the ordinance at your direction. And secondly, also, was to address the proximity of the devices to the fire rings or, you know, those combustible areas, and we'll get some direction from the Fire Department, and add some language in that also when we bring it back to you. Outside of that, again, any direction or discussion that we can add to the ordinance is appreciated.
Okay. Any comments from council? Councilman Hen.
Just to fill in on behalf of Councilwoman Gardner, she did send an email prior to the meeting today indicating an interest to have separation between the units, and so, for example, whether it's six by six or 10 by 10, you can't just line them up very close to each other. Now, I know you mentioned having them immediately adjacent, but it seems to me like there could, there should be some guidance about the amount of separation between minimum sized or maximum size coverings. So I would agree with her comment on that, just for the benefit of the rest of council in case they hadn't seen it, she also was concerned that the 10 by 10 limitation was too large, and that maybe it ought to be more restrictive, more like Laguna Beach. So with regard to Laguna Beach, can you give us a little more color on the challenges to that at this juncture?
Actually, Kathy Hamilton, who I think is going to speak to you when I'm finished, provide me that information today, and I wasn't aware of it prior. Apparently, there have been some challenges via the ACLU. Laguna Beach previously had a similar ordinance to what we recommended the first time, meaning that EZ Up awning type devices were restricted completely, and they had a single pole shade device or an umbrella, which could not exceed six feet and which could not have any side panels. My understanding is that's been challenged. Laguna Beach's current ordinance still indicates six by six, but doesn't address the side panel issue at all, and I haven't followed it up further, but my supposition would be that that's in response to perhaps the challenges that they'd received previously.
Okay, well, just speaking on behalf of myself, then, I do agree with Councilwoman Gardner that some sort of separation guidance between covered devices would be appropriate to be included, although I guess, you know, just for my own personal use, 10 by 10 doesn't seem to be excessive to me, but as opposed to six, I think they come, the next size down is usually six by six, right?
Speaking from personal opinion, I've never seen a six by six. 10 by 10 is the more standard size, and then they go up from there. That's not supported by anything other than having purchased a few of them for the lake, but that is my understanding of it.
Yeah, my experience also, Mike, has been 10 by 10 is about what most people would have.
And there are larger ones.
Yes, you go up in size from there.
So I'm okay on the 10 by 10. I very much am in support of language regarding separation from the fire pits. I've actually had some comment from residents about that, the danger of it down on the peninsula, and I'm sure it's the same over Corona del Mar, so that one, I think, would be a very good one. And I think that's it. As far as the exception on the city use, I think that's probably appropriate.
Councilman Webb?
I guess that I would agree with the 10 by 10, because I don't think we should restrict it to something that can't be purchased, which would be the six by six if they're not there. not there. It would seem like to me that if we're going to have separation, that we need to give them some guidance. We're talking about a foot, two feet, 10 feet?
Well, I had, I had six feet in mind, but I don't know.
Well, I, I think if you're trying to provide shade for two or three people, you, you, the 10 by 10 makes, makes sense to me, and, and perhaps we ought to look at as much separation as we have, the width of the, of the shade facility, so that would be a 10-foot separation.
By way of updating, and these would just be my observations during the summertime, that Corona Del Mar Beach gets so crowded that it is not unusual to have parties who are not together, to have these shade devices very close in proximity, a foot or two separating them.
Showing the pictures here.
Yes, sir.
Of the, the four of them grouped together to where they really have probably 400 or 500 square feet, and...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but those people are probably related, Don. He's saying that there's unrelated people that might be within a couple of feet of each other.
Yes, sir. My, my view would be that if we, if we suggested 10 feet, or an amount equal to the size of the shade devices itself, that you were going to seriously limit the number of people that, that are allowed to fit on the beach, and given the overcrowding issues that we have already, I don't know how we would be able to referee that.
I think, I, I guess I'll go along with Mike here on this, because my feeling is, no, if there's room on the beach, no one's going to set up within six feet of another person. It's only when the beach is kind of getting crowded, and, and usually you're not going to be able to shoehorn it in. So I think we're probably going to prevent most of the problem of the adjacencies there just by splitting them up and saying you can't have a, just a mega tent.
If I might make a suggestion, perhaps that they be configured in a manner that allows walkway or walking width between individual canopies to allow, again, safety personnel or anyone to navigate their way through. Right now, that wouldn't occur.
What distance would you say that is?
Three feet. I would say that's about the size of a normal sidewalk, about the width of a sidewalk.
I'll still stick...
Sidewalks are four feet.
I'll stick with...
Five feet are comfortable with five people side by side.
Okay.
Eight feet are desirable.
I'll stick with Mike on the six feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I think I need to point out, though, that, that separation is, is, I think, problematic. I, I can see that you're going to get residents saying, okay, there's one four feet, you know, so we have to go and take it down because it isn't possible at six feet.
Well, who exactly is going to enforce this? Not the lifeguards, right?
No, and we discussed in terms of enforcement, we've talked with some other city staff, and it, it would, it would fall to a similar sort of system that we've, that we've worked out with Recreation Senior Services and, and the fire department, as we do the barbecues and, and some of the other things we've recently prohibited, meaning that Recreation Senior Services, both at the, at the parking facility as well as through the park patrol, would attempt to comply, would attempt to try to get compliance from people by diplomatically explaining what our rules are, what we need them to do, and it would be at the point that they would refuse to comply, that the police department would be contacted and come down and provide enforcement. It's been, this summer, relatively successful in the abatement of the barbecue issue that we've had in the past.
I know it's probably a learning curve.
Yes, sir.
As people come down. Well, I would agree with Mike about the separation of the six feet. I think 10 by 10 is, is not out of line, just knowing that that's really is what's out there. Six by six doesn't really provide much coverage anyway, I mean, it's really, you know, unless the sun's directly overhead, you know, you're not going to, you're going to be constantly moving the thing. So I would agree with those two items, or two changes, I guess.
Well, from my, from my two cents, I guess I would be inclined to favor a six by six, but if, to the extent that it's not an option because it's just commercially available tents. I mean, that really just says you're not going to have umbrellas. So if six by, if 10 by 10 is what is the most logical application, I guess I'm okay with that. I would sort of seek there to be, I would define the separation to be a reasonable amount of space to walk between the two tents. And I, of course, would support the city being able to have its own exemptions to this, to this rule. I think this is part of a bigger issue. I think we need to look at whether or not the fire pits are, are still appropriate on these beaches as well because of, you know, the congestion issues. I mean, I, I hadn't really thought about all of this until I went down and looked at it, and it looks like we have entire tent cities now on our beaches on some weekends, and it's just something we've really got to deal with.
Well, I, I think, I think we've got two problems here. One is what you do on Corona Del Mar and Little Corona Beach to some degree, because they're very small, very constrained beaches, then you've got the beaches in the peninsula and West Newport, which are wide open. Given their own devices, people are going to spread out and not be on top of each other, but because Corona Del Mar is so small and there's such a high demand for use, people are pretty much forced to be jammed on top of each other. So I would tend to favor a six by six, but again, if it's something that you can't get, I don't know what the purposes of it, particularly given the direction I understand Laguna Beach is going because of this ACLU situation. Maybe the public will have something to say on that, see what's going on there.
Well, I imagine we can get a little more information about the availability of six by six and 10 by 10, and maybe a little better information about the Laguna Beach situation. I would, just to follow on on a comment you made, with regard to the peninsula, you're right, generally, there's plenty of room on the peninsula for people. We can get a lot of people there without it seeming like it's too crowded, with the exception that by the piers and the public restroom facilities, and to a lesser extent, clustering right around the lifeguard stations, it can get to be, you know, pretty, pretty packed. And so I, I think there's application really across all the beaches for this.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, hear from the public.
Kathy Hamilton, Ocean Boulevard, Corona Del Mar. Thank you. Thank you all very much for your support on this. We have also liked to especially thank Captain Johnson and his officers, and David Hunt, the city attorney, who's been involved in this, and very helpful. We have given you the little visual aid book of the pictures that some of us have taken, and I wanted to make it clear to you that this, these pictures were not taken on a holiday. They were taken at the end of July, some on weekends, some during the week. This is what the beach looks like, and you can see it for yourself. And some of the things in there are in the ordinance already, and I believe that there are no tents. Is that, am I correct in that? That there are no, no tents? Okay. So when you, what you see in there are the see-through tents, and you can see that if you're inside a tent, you can see through it, but if you're outside of it and you're getting double netting, you can't see anything. So we're in support of what is already in existence, which is no tents. We're in support of the, the canopies, the EZ Ups, and we appreciate your consideration about that as far as the distance between them. Of course, the more there is, we think the better it is for everybody who's at the beach. Please take these photo, photos home and look at them at your leisure and see the density that we're dealing with on Big Corona. It's, it's really something that is almost out of control, there's so many people. And nothing wrong with the people, we just need to make sure that those who are there have the ability to enjoy the beach by being able to sit on it and see the water and feel the breezes. We are asking in the new ordinance that we go ahead with the EZ Ups. They seem to be working well. The cards that have been passed out have really gotten people's attention, and a lot of people have been very good about not having tents and are using the EZ Ups, and many of them are using them without any sides. Lot of them are dropping two legs that, towards the west, because that's where the sun comes down. So if, when they drop the 10-foot expanse, they are being shielded. We are for one side to be covered as opposed to two, because it does block people's views, and there are so many people crowding as getting as close to the water as they can for the coolness, and it just plain does obscure the views. We would respectfully like to see just one side on the EZ Ups, and that would probably undoubtedly be the west side. And we thank you. Thank you very much for all of your interest and all of your concern, and we look forward to seeing what happens. Thank you.
Kathy, can you explain what's going on in Laguna?
I can only tell you when I have previously spoken to the city and to the Laguna Beach PD, that at that time, as Captain Johnson said, until very recently, it was one pole, six-foot diameter on the umbrellas, and that was it for Laguna. I have been told by them that when Dean Chamoransky at UCI had a project for, and this is hearsay, I'm not sure that it was a project for his law students, I understand that's what they told me that it was, that they wanted them to go to Laguna and bring the ACLU to pressure the city to provide a facility for homeless people. And I was told this by staff at the police department and staff at the city, so please understand that I didn't get this in writing and it wasn't signed, but that they were told that they had to do something for, unless they had a facility that they can, the ACLU considered adequate for homeless people, that they would have to open their beaches and allow the homeless people to have a place to, to sleep. And I will tell you that they're all upset about it. That's all I know.
Okay, thanks. Any other speakers?
My name is Joan Coleman, and my husband Mark and I live on Orchid in Corona Del Mar for 15 years, and on most weekends, we can be found on Big Corona, and also several early evenings during the week. My main concern on this is the safety issue. When I am down there with my husband or my grandchildren and they're in the waves, just being able to sit in a beach chair, I can't see the waves. I can't see them, and I will not rely strictly on the lifeguard to make sure my husband doesn't kill himself in the waves. And it really is, this summer in particular, every weekend has been like 4th of July weekend. The crowds are unprecedented, and I'm, I agree with Kathy on the one side of the tent. Once you get two that are contiguous, it really blocks your view. You have to stand up, you almost have to be in a lifeguard tower to be able to see the ocean and the safety. So that's my main concern. Plus, I do love the beach.
Thank you.
And as far as the 10 by 10, just listening from being down there as much as we are, there are so many multi-generational families together, I don't know how they would be able to fit under a six by six. I mean, you will usually see grandparents, parents, and kids, so that's just an observation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen James. I live in Corona Del Mar, and I did write a letter to the city council on June 6th when I thought this issue was going to be addressed. So I brought copies just in case you've forgotten what I said. And I advocate umbrellas only. They're beautiful, they're inexpensive, they don't block anybody's view. I will go along with what my other neighbors have said, and, but for mine, I think umbrellas just make a beautiful beach scene, and there's sunscreen, and I think that that's really all you need. I would like to take this opportunity, though, to thank the city council for the no smoking ordinance that you have for the beaches. I belong to the Newport Beach Clean, Clean Beach, and I clean the little beach where I live, and since that ordinance has come into play, there's hardly any cigarette butts anymore, mainly it's water bottles and pieces of Styrofoam. So I thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, bring it back to council. Any thoughts on the one side versus two sides?
I'd be for the one side.
I guess the only thought that I have is if, if it takes it to be one side so that you can't put two of them together, each with two sides, and create an, in fact, a three-sided enclosure, you know, I mean, that's, that would, that would be concerning to me. So maybe some language to the effect that you can't combine them to create a three-sided enclosure using two sides. I don't know if we need that or not.
But if you've got a separation, that helps you.
Well, the two, two smaller ones put together, I don't know.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would tend to support the one side. Part of it too, but... Any other thoughts? We've got to give the staff some direction. I think we kind of got a direction on the separation going. And the 10 by 10, we got that, so... Councilman Webb?
I'm fine with one side, if that's what it takes, yeah.
Looks like you got a majority.
Are you okay with that?
I'm going to fight one or the other.
Okay. All right, Captain Johnson, you got your direction?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the report on the funding feasibility for open space of Banning Ranch.
As a way of pursuing both of the options in our general plan for Banning Ranch, the city council appointed the Banning Ranch appraisal and acquisition ad hoc committee, and that committee worked on an appraisal of the property that was presented to the city council some months ago. And this afternoon, we have the report on funding feasibility that was prepared by Dave Meyerson of Resource Opportunity Group, and I'd like Dave to present his report.
Okay, Dave?
David Meyerson, good afternoon. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for inviting me here today to receive my report on the funding feasibility for a potential Banning Ranch acquisition. My report has been made available to you and to the public, so I won't attempt to read the report, as I assume you're aware of its contents and conclusions. I will, however, highlight some of the items from the report and then make myself available for comments and endeavor to respond to questions from members of the council. I was retained by the City of Newport Beach to assist in the following tasks. Number one, advise the city on methods and approaches for appraisal of the Banning Ranch property. Number two, assist the city in the selection process to engage an appraisal firm to assess the fair market value of the Banning Ranch. And number three, assist the city to identify potential sources of conservation funds for a possible acquisition of the property and to assess the feasibility of such an acquisition. The first two tasks in this assignment were addressed at the city council study session in January of this year, with testimony from Ron Busch, your appraiser, so I will not revisit that discussion. The third task took more time than I had anticipated when we last met, due to the current economic downturn and the accompanying budget issues, or should we say woes, in Sacramento, and the resulting inability of the state to sell park bonds and otherwise fund worthy projects throughout the state. My interviews and discussions with potential conservation funders and various interested parties in the public and private sector alike illustrates, illustrates a bleak outlook in the near term for garnering funds to complete an acquisition of the Banning Ranch in its entirety. A common theme in these discussions, as expressed to me, was, and I quote, "We believe that the most important wetland and upland habitat on the property should be preserved through the entitlement process," end quote. Budgets have been slashed, funding priorities have been revisited, and new projects of this magnitude are on hold. In my opinion, it does not appear that sufficient funds would be available to acquire the entire 400 acres of the Banning Ranch property in any reasonable timeframe. Local funding sources might be more readily available, but likely not at the level that would make possible a successful acquisition of the ranch. If, as some have suggested, that regulatory authorities ultimately downsize the proposed development project, resulting in a reduced land valuation, new opportunities may arise for conservation funding to be applied to various acquisition scenarios at the Banning Ranch, if economic conditions are favorable. It must be pointed out, however, that portions of this property carry a significant per-acre valuation, which must be prioritized alongside other statewide acquisition projects. Thus, I recommend patience and a steady course through the environmental review process that along with evolving market conditions and agency financing guidelines may yield creative acquisition scenarios not yet contemplated. Thank you, and that concludes my prepared remarks.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Meyerson, comments?
Dave, so just to sum up the report here, because I know we've met before, but just more for the general public, so would you, would it be on or fair to say that the consensus amongst the agencies and the... amongst the agencies and the sources of, you know, funding for, that would naturally be interested in a project like this, that their opinion was that if, if this, you know, because the developer is willing to basically deed over a significant, more than the majority of the parcel and restore it, that they felt that that was an opportunity that should be pursued, or at least that was...
That is the preferred method.
Preferred method, okay. Thank you.
We had continued this some time back to allow you an opportunity to meet with people that represented the Banning Ranch Conservancy or other groups interested in preserving Banning Ranch. Did you have, have an opportunity to meet and discuss with these people?
I did.
And they had the opportunity to meet and discuss with you?
I met on one occasion at a breakfast meeting with Terry Welsh and Steve Ray, and we've spoken a number of times by phone and traded emails. I also spoke by phone with Jean Watt to interview her and get some of her comments. All of these comments from both groups have been included in my report.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions?
David, I guess one question that's a little, I still have in my mind is that when we talk about purchasing the whole 400 acres, it seems like roughly 200 acres is going to be undevelopable anyway because of environmental concerns. So is the issue, then, the amount of money to acquire 200 acres, or is it 400 acre size?
400. If we're talking about a complete acquisition and there's no development, then your opportunity, then, is to purchase the Banning Ranch in its entirety from the developers, from the owners at this point, if they have no opportunity to develop, so you'd be talking about a 400-acre purchase.
I think what I was getting at, though, the real value is in the developable portion of the land.
Yes.
I mean, the wetlands or the lowland area probably, even if you were cutting it up, would probably have a very low cost or value, and the mesa portion where they could build homes and doesn't have sensitive habitat would probably be much more expensive.
Well, and I think Ron Busch addressed this issue when he was here at some length and responded to comments from the council and from the community on, on potential values. I'm not an appraiser, so I won't get into all the details of his appraisal and try and defend it, but in his appraisal, he valued each of the various components of the property, be they upland, lowland, wetlands, whatnot, and all of the components, the various parcels, had some value affixed to them. Obviously, some of the values were quite low, as you point out, and very, on parcels that were very difficult to develop, but all of them had some component of value to them. So I'm not sure which parcels exactly would be subject to purchase or not, but in some form, you're gonna have to buy the whole ranch, whatever the, the level of values are for each individual parcel.
In your talks with the various agencies and charities that provide funding for this, did you get a sense that there might be some money available, let's say for, let's not talk about the part that they're gonna give us, but the part that they're gonna develop, maybe to purchase some of that property so that there'll be a smaller development and more money, more land or acreage to the...
Yeah, this is one of the, I guess what I mentioned in my, in my remarks and in the report, the potential for some creative solutions as you move forward through the review process. Speaking in hypothetical, there obviously, one could envision a scenario where the landowner, any landowner, might say, given the current market conditions, I choose to develop only parcels A, C, and F, and I'm making up these numbers, they don't relate to this, and I am now willing to sell parcels B and D because they would help your connectivity for the parcels that are being dedicated, or maybe some habitat restoration. In that case, then you're looking at a far smaller number, whatever dollar attaches to those parcels. Then I think you'd get a much more honest hearing and more open reception with the agencies, the various agencies at the state, federal, and county levels at funding one or more of these parcels, because they'd be within a realm of possibility, rather than taking down the whole 400 acres, which is just out of the realm of possibility at this time.
So that, so there may be some interest in funding acquisition of more critical pieces that would complete the, the portion, let's say, that's being given to us?
They were, they're all uniformly unwilling to commit at this point, given the budget situations, the inability to sell bonds, but I think, as with any transaction, it's much easier to respond to a transaction where you walk into an office and lay a document on the desk that says, here's my appraisal, here's my purchase and sale agreement, here's what I intend to do, do you have $7.3 million, or can we assemble these funds? Much different than walking into an office and saying, geez, I'd hope to be able to buy 400 acres, and it might cost me $182 million, what do you think? Those are, you know, magnitude differences there that it's much harder to respond to.
Thank you. Councilman Curry?
Mr. Meyerson, you discussed the availability of state bond proceeds under the caption here under the Conservancy. Are you aware, are there authorized but unissued state bonds that, for which this would be an eligible purpose?
Prop 84, my understanding would, and there may be others, maybe there's some left in Prop 50, but Prop 84, I think, probably has the largest allocation, assuming that it could be used, to fund this type of an acquisition.
And you know, ballpark, how much is still available?
No, they, each, each of these bonds have so many different individual pots of money that attach to different types of acquisitions, that it's a matter of putting pieces together like a puzzle, to figure out how much you can take from each of these pots and what's available for Southern California, Orange County, LA County, and so forth, and, and to be quite honest, where the political support is, that would help that to come together.
And are you aware of any pending legislation that would provide additional bond capacity for projects of this nature in Sacramento?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hen.
I want to bear down a little more on this issue of the, the opinion of the agencies about the best way to go here. We all know we've been in, through, still in, a very deep crisis situation for funding at government of all levels. We all hope and trust that that will pass, and we'll have better days ahead here at some point. Were the opinions of these agencies that you talked to driven mostly by the dire concern about the current situation? Or were they speaking to you in more of a long-term strategy context, even, let's assume we were not in a crisis funding situation? Do you think the answers to you would have been any different?
Let's use the coastal Conservancy's discussion as one, one possible way to address that. When I talked to, talked to the coastal Conservancy, they, of course, like all state agencies, are very much concerned with the restrictions on bond sales and acceptance of any new projects at all. But what I was told was pretty specifically that even if this was not the case, even if we were not in this crisis today, we are running out of funds, say we, they are running out of funds, to allocate to large acquisitions on the coast in the Orange County area. They have done so much at Bolsa Cheek and other areas that they're not sure that they have enough funding that could be applied to a project of this magnitude, that even where there are no crises, they would be able to say, yes, I think we could pull from this pot and that pot, and we could probably, you know, write a check for 125 of the 100 and whatever. So I think it's a little bit of both. There certainly is a morale and a concern and direct restrictions on bond funds today being used for anything, but I think it was also a statement to me that in the future, this is going to be a very high hurdle to jump for projects of this size.
So I guess the sum of that is waiting may not improve the response from these agencies? There's an argument that we just need to wait a while. We need to give this plenty of time for things to...
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't have a crystal ball, and I'd hate to have to come back to you in a year and a half and been made a fool of when all of a sudden capital gains, taxes, and everything are flooding the state with money, and members' requests are back in fashion again. I just don't see that happening. That's not what I'm being told by legislators, by agency folks, that this is a long haul here, and if we're going to make this happen, it's going to be with the landowners and maybe with some creative solutions on picking parcels that we feel are priority parcels that will help put together, as I said, this jigsaw puzzle of a piece of property that we want to save.
I guess this is a question more for staff than Mr. Meyerson, but we're gonna keep him on, in case anything comes up that we can analyze and take advantage of, if things change, or if an opportunity comes about. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the recommendation, and I think it speaks to Councilmember's, Councilmember Hen's last question. It may not be so much waiting as what they've called being patient and, and proceed with the development review process for the property owner's application, but keep our minds open to possibilities for partial or perhaps even full acquisition at some point in the future, when we know more about what the environmental impacts of the project are and what some of the other review agencies are, are going to say about the project. And so I think it would be helpful to keep Dave Meyerson available to us, to kind of keep his ears open for what may be happening at the state level, and also to, to help us look at the environmental reports and, and see if he can help put together some creative solutions.
Okay. And then the general plan says if the property isn't acquired for open space within a time period, in pursuant to terms agreed by the city property owner, the site may be developed as a residential village with the vast majority of the property preserved as open space. We don't ever define what that time period is, so it's just kind of an open-ended thing, or are we looking at the time it takes to get through the city and the Coastal Commission, or...
We, we haven't ever defined it. We talked about it when the general plan was being written, and we didn't know what would be a reasonable time then, and, and I don't know that I could answer that question now, but I think that looking at the development review time period is a logical way to go. That's not going to be quick, and it's not going to be inexpensive for the property owner, and so with what we know now about the price of the land for open space and the funding possibilities, it doesn't seem to me to be fair or reasonable to hold the property owner up.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thanks, David.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone that wants to speak, come forward and state your name, please.
Mayor Selich, honorable council members, my name is Steve Ray. I'm the executive director of the Banning Ranch Conservancy, one of the people Dave mentioned in his report. First of all, I would like to support the staff and, I believe, the ad hoc committee's recommendations to continue to retain the services of Dave Meyerson. We feel that, that can have value, in spite of his bleak report.
He's an optimistic fellow, though.
Well, not as optimistic as I am, so... And, and with all due respect to Dave, I do take a little exception to the, to the terms of bleak and overwhelming and things like that. We have a slightly different view of that. First of all, I spent 25 years of my life doing film financing deals, and I can tell you that every film is put together with a whole bunch of pots of money, and that's exactly what this acquisition's gonna require. So when you talk to one source of funding about purchasing 400 acres, it's overwhelming for any single one of them, yes. However, when you carefully approach and analyze the possibilities out there and talk to the, all of the individual potential sources, there is a great opportunity to bring money to bear for various parts of that. For instance, you can divide the property up into certain areas, and you'll find that there is money, for instance, for wetlands at the coastal Conservancy, because that's primarily what they spend money for, to purchase wetlands. So if you're just looking at wetlands, there is money out there available for that. Right now, the biggest problem anybody has is the uncertainty of the economy. We don't know how long this is gonna last. Everybody's gonna, kind of sitting on pins and needles. A lot of the nonprofits out there are kind of revisioning and kind of rethinking how they can raise more money, just like everybody else is. So there's, there's this process we're going through, and, and that's the difficulty everybody's having right now. But this is not going to continue forever. These organizations are going to find the resources. There is money available. I know in talking to some of these same people that Dave mentioned in his report, and I, I talked to some of them after he had spoken to them, and we presented our strategy, and I wish I had more than three minutes here to, to outline them to you, but our strategy, we have a, a means to, we're, you know, the, the primary thing with a lot of these things, you have to get your first pot of money, and then you start looking at matching. And even federal government, I sit on a, a national panel that advises the director of the National Resource Conservation Service on conservation land purchases around the country. So I've already got Banning Ranch on that list of potential receivers of money. So there are possibilities out there, but we have to get matching. We look at Measure M as being a ripe source for that. And I know he talked to Dan Silver, I've talked to Dan Silver, I've also talked to several other members of that committee, and outlined our strategy, and it seems to be, you know, receiving a, a fair hearing from them as a viable strategy. So we think that there are a lot of opportunities out there to, to bring financing to it. It's going to take a long time. This is not a short-haul thing. You know, this development agreement or development proposal is in process. We expect to continue. We, of course, our goal of the Conservancy is to preserve all 400 acres. Our goal is to acquire all 400 acres, or certainly as many as, as can be saved. So that's what we're working toward. There is money available. We are working on, it's a long-term process, and one of the, two of the things that we really need, though, to make that happen, besides having this matching fund to start off with, are we need cooperation from the property owner. We need a letter indicating that they would be willing to enter negotiations for sale of some or all of the property. Not having that letter makes it difficult when we're talking to a lot of these organizations. The second thing that they look for primarily is what they call local support. That is, do the people in your community support that? Certainly, if we can get Measure M funding for that, that's public funds from the taxpayers in Orange County, that shows public support. We've all, already gotten a very kind letter from you, the council, and thank you for that, indicating your support for our proposal to Measure M. We need more of that, of that upfront local support to indicate to these sources that these things are possible. As long as everybody keeps saying it's bleak, it's overwhelming, it's not possible, it doesn't look good, that's gonna be the way we think. But the minute you start putting these things together, they actually do work out in the end. So that's what we're working toward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Rick? Perfect timing, by the way. Councilman Hen?
So do you, so then the Banning Ranch Conservancy itself will be making application for funding for this project?
We already have.
You have?
We, we put in for it, we made a presentation, we got a very good hearing, and we have been meeting with the individual members of the committee.
Oh, which committee?
That's the Environmental Oversight Committee of OCTA. Besides the fact, we have been talking to most of these organizations that Dave Meyerson listed in his report, except for one, the Resource Law Group. We have not approached them yet, but we have talked to them, as well as additional groups that he has not listed here.
Okay, any other questions? You had said in your presentation that the coastal Conservancy has money set aside for wetlands. Do you know how much money they have set aside?
They're, they have different pots. That's the one possible problem when you talk about the state and federal government, they have pots.
Let's talk about the coastal Conservancy, that's the one you said.
Okay, well, they, they have pots, too. Different pots. At this point, they have like one pot for 30 million, they have another pot for about 170 million dollars. It depends on how they define the qualifications.
Is this cash in hand, or money that comes from bonds sold in the future or something?
It's a combination.
Is this actual cash in hands?
So they have some cash in hand, they also have obligations under like Prop 84. I think in Prop 84, there's a total of 200, around 230 million, from what I understand, coming to them from that.
That's for the entire state, though.
That's from the entire state, yeah.
But do you know how much money they actually have?
Coastal Conservancy specializes in...
Do you know how much money they actually have in hand right now?
No, I'm not, I, I wouldn't state with certainty, no.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Councilman, who's asking?
Steve, you said you had spoken to some of the same groups that Dave did. Did you get a different response than what he has in his report from those groups, or...
Well, I, I think our approach has been different. It's, it's been a matter of we come at the discussion from a different angle. You know, we're looking at bringing together different pots of money into the same deal, and we've laid out our strategy to them of how we intend to go about doing this, and so once they listen to that, I think they start seeing possibilities themselves. These are people that have been doing this for a long time. They're experts at it. They've raised, you know, hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars over the years these organizations have to acquire these lands, so this is not new to them, it's just they have to, they have to be able to envision it.
But I, I guess what I'm getting at is, and it was a question that I asked Dave, was that... that, and the sense that I get from having discussions outside of this room with him in our committee meetings when he's made his reports to us, is that the groups that he's speaking with, and the same groups that you're speaking with, are saying that, hey, if you can get the majority of it free, that's, you know, that's something we can live with here. That we kick in more, maybe a little more, to get a little bit more, but we're not, you know, are you getting that same sense there?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, and let me kind of clarify. I think there's maybe a misconception here that most of this land is going to be given free. And maybe, I know Phil Bettencourt is here from the developer, and maybe they can help clarify this, too, but my understanding that the free land, as it were, will be parkland that's been, that will be dedicated as a part of the development project. It is not nearly the whole rest of the chunk that they will not be able to develop. For instance, you know, all of the wetlands down there will never be developed, the arroyos will never be developed, everybody knows that, the Coastal Commission will never accept that. Protected habitats on the mesas, the burrowing owl habitats, for instance, and that catcher habitats will not be developed. Anybody who really knows how it works knows that as well. So there's going to be a lot of land that is not going to be developed. A developable proportion is probably going to...
I called out the free land. They're going to give us that land, they're not, we're not paying for it, so whatever it condition is.
Well, my understanding is that's not the case. They're going to give a certain amount of land for parks. The rest of the land, however, my understanding is that they're not going to give it away, it will, it will need to be acquired. So that land will, there will have to be money for that land at somewhere, at some point, too. The parkland will be some of the open space up on the mesa and around the edges of the development footprint. But all of the other areas in the arroyos and the wetlands, those aren't going to be given away, from what I understand. Those are going to have to be acquired as well.
Well, I guess that's not my understanding of how it's going to work, but that remains to be seen.
I think Sharon has a comment on that.
The development proposal includes dedication to the city of the land for the community park. It also includes dedication of the arroyos and some of the restoration areas to some nonprofit, and the property owners are talking about the possibility of forming some kind of an organization who could take ownership of those areas. And then there is a third amount of land that the owners don't believe will be necessary to mitigate the impacts of their project, that they would make available to a third party as a mitigation bank. And I don't remember the exact acreages of the split between the latter two.
So basically, it's a minor part of the arroyos and wetlands that would be sold for mitigation?
The arroyos are not part of what would be sold for mitigation, it's the lowland.
Mayor, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Sir, obviously, the wetlands have great habitat value to birds, fish, and animals. But the part that is looked at being developed is greatly disturbed, it's not pristine, it's not in a natural state. So applying for funding in order to purchase that property, would that be purchased as open space, or, because it doesn't seem like it would qualify for funding for great habitat value?
Well, as Ronald Bus pointed out in his consulted price study, there is a different value for each of the lands. Some of the lands that we know won't be built on the wetlands, for instance, the arroyos, have a much less, much less value for them. The land that could be developed, of course, there's, there will be a lot of discussion as to what that footprint will be. What can be developed, either through the city's entitlement process or through the Coastal Commission, whatever that development footprint might be, that land would obviously have a much greater value. It would have to be purchased at that value. You know, we have no problem with, you know, a fair price being paid for the land. It's just how much of it is going to be developable, and that will determine the price value for that. It would be much higher. The rest of the land will be much, much easier to acquire at a much lower price.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Rosemary Steinbraker, and I live at the Versailles condominiums, which is kind of across the street and around the corner from what this, part of this project. And about a year ago, two of the people representing Banning Ranch Development Company came to our condominium board meeting. And one of the things that they said was that they were, they were kind of selling their, their development plan, but they said that a lot of this wetlands and perpetual open space that may in fact be undevelopable was going to be cleaned up by these people. And they indicated, and I can't give you exact citations at this point, but they indicated at a certain considerable expense, more or less as a trade-off for the developable sections. And I just wondered if, I'm not hearing anybody comment on this aspect of this open space, it may be perpetual open space, but is that in fact true, that there will be some further expenses even if it is acquired or whatever happens, that the developer originally, whether they've still been willing to do that, I don't know, probably, but that they were willing to absorb that expense? And has anybody thought of that or talked about it or anything in, in this plan for acquiring the property?
Will, do you have any other comments? We'll answer that when you're...
Not really. I just, am I supposed to sign something, or?
No, that's fine. Okay, Sharon, do you want to comment on what the, what the development proposal is regarding the oil field cleanup?
The property owner's preference is for them to do the cleanup of the property from the oil operations before it is sold or given to anyone, because that offers them the greatest protection from the future liability, because they have been the property owner in the past. Now, I suppose that if, if someone is purchasing the property as open space from them, then it becomes part of the negotiation, whether the owners are going to be reimbursed for that cost or not.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Jan Danus, Newport Heights. I'd like to mention that this whole property is considered critical habitat for the nat catcher. So it does have ecological value, and the main reason why it's degraded is because of what's happened over the past few months, which happens every year, and that is they mow it. They've mowed the habitat on the grasslands up there down to about three inches high. And they've actually mowed it, mowed some of the coastal sage scrub down to three inches high, which essentially takes away the habitat value. But if those mesa tops were left alone to come back naturally, then it provides greater environmentally sensitive habitat areas. And this is something that I think the city should investigate when you're evaluating whether or not, you know, where the environmentally sensitive habitat are, habitats are on the Banning Ranch property. I commend you for continuing this effort to satisfy the general plan priority as acquiring it for open space. But I don't know, I would suggest that you take a more proactive approach and actually hire an organization to go through the steps to accomplish it, accomplish acquisition. And by that, I mean organizations like Trust for Public Land, or the American Land Conservancy. Trust for Public Land, American Land Conservancy. You have to pay Trust for Public Land, the American Land Conservancy does it on consignment. But basically, what they do is, that's what they do. They acquire large parcels, and they do it throughout the United States. They find other land. They may find land that they can trade for this land. But their job is not just to see what is available out there, their job is to do the job, to get it acquired. And I think that if they are retained by the city of Newport Beach, a pretty powerful agency, if they have your backing, and you're the ones with employing TPL or American Land Conservancy to acquire the land, then you'll find all kinds of different ways to acquire this land, just like they did at Bolsachica Mesa. You remember when they were talking about how that was acquired? That was not just acquired with the $65 million from Prop 50 money. That was acquired because somebody sat down with them and told them, well, we can give you some land entitlement over here, we can make some tax breaks over there. There's actually a whole potpourri of strategies that led to the acquisition of the lower bench of the Bolsachica Mesa. It's not just one simple transaction. And I don't think that's going to be the case with the Banning Ranch. I think that one of the agencies that has not been approached adequately is the ports. The ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles were instrumental in Bolsachica, the acquisition and the restoration of the wetlands at Bolsachica. They had to, the ports actually had to acquire that land in order to restore it. And they're always, the ports are always in, on the lookout for mitigation sites, since they're always digging out, they always want to expand port capacity, so they always have to make up for it, they have to mitigate it elsewhere. And it seems to me that, at least for the lowland portion of it, this particular, the wetlands at, at Banning Ranch could be acquired and restored, perhaps solely through the ports. The ports spent something like $100 million at Bolsachica, and about $29 million of that went to acquisition of the lowlands. The major points of contention are going to be the mesa portion, the C1 and C2 areas. And these are short prairie grass habitat areas that have great value to certain sensitive species like the burrowing owl. And these are the areas that are going to be the most difficult to acquire, but they have the most potential for providing ecological value. So again, I think that we have to have a strategy of how to pull all of this together. And I think we need more than just one consultant saying, you know, what funds are out there. I think funds are going to become more available in the future, because the economy is starting to rebound. But in the meantime, I think you have to have, you should be retaining an organization like the TPL or American Land Conservancy. American Land Conservancy was involved at Bolsachica. They didn't wind up being the eventual people who accomplished the sale of Bolsachica, but they set it up. They went through the Federal Department of the Interior, and they got it set up so the state finally acquired it.
Thank you, Jan. Any other speakers?
While he's coming up, maybe I should add, I know that Dave Meyerson made at least a few attempts to contact the ports, and I believe that they did not return his calls. You may want him to comment on that some more.
Okay. Go ahead, sir.
My name's Kevin Nelson. I just wanted to make a, you know, a plea for as much time as is required to work out the funding for this property. I mean, as Mr. Meyerson said, you know, things can happen, as Jan made the case here, things can, things can change. Certainly, they changed economically a couple of years ago. We saw how dramatic that was. Things could improve. Secondly, I think that the, you know, we're looking, as funds, if and as funds do become available, we're looking at a place which is unique on the coast. Between Santa Monica and San Diego, and for a fair degree, for a fair distance inland in those areas, where else, where, what other places are there like Banning that would be contending for the funds? Those are a handful, if any. So we have, we're lucky enough to have a place that, when funding does become available, we'll be in good line for it, because it's a beautiful piece of land, it's ecologically very valuable. Your statement as to the, you know, the fact that some of the mesa is degraded as a result of the oil, you know, usage is true on a portion of it. But even with the mowing, even with the oil, the little bit of oil activity, everything that hasn't been, you know, that isn't a dirt road or, or an oil derrick, is valuable, wild, and supporting, you know, a lot of bird life. I mean, you know, predator birds that just aren't there looking around, they're not hunting on streets. They're hunting out on those mesa lands, there are the building pads, constantly. I mean, it's easy to see, it's quite easy to see, that that's the case. As much there is on the, on the lowland marsh areas. So, thirdly, I'd say that the, as much as, you know, as much as the financial situation points away from even trying, even trying to preserve Banning right now, the realities of this development, the fact that we're, that we're, you know, that people are so disgusted and, and upset over, over the overcrowding in the area, the traffic situation, the water situation, all these realities are just pushing us all to say, well, wait a minute, maybe we should slow down before we develop the last developable place in this area. The water, there was a recent study that came out, again, the second one, pointing to the fact that the Colorado River Basin has a one in two chance by 2047, I believe, or 2048, of being dry. That is going to severely impinge on our water situation. So you've got any number of realities which point against development as much as point against preservation financially right now. And I, I think we should just, plus the fact that, you know, we've got one chance, this is the last, we've got one place that everyone is focused on that is viable to save, contiguous with other parklands, and we should take the time to just let this sit still for a few years and let the funds become available. It would be a travesty to say, well, we took a year, we took a year and a half, we took two and a half years, and still nothing happened, so we're going to wipe it clean. That would just, you know, Banning is, that place, that place is worth more than that to the future. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. James Quigg is my name. I have a background in, in tax reductions, both on a corporate and on a personal basis. One of the transactions that was done in Huntington Beach, Bolsachica, was a tax-driven sale. In fact, I'm not sure whether it was actually included in the appraisals or in the comparables, but there are ways that it could be structured favorably tax-wise, where the property could be donated, or gifted, if you will, at a higher level, conceivably the appraised value. And in fact, in fact, the price of the property could be what's referred to as a bargain price, bargain price sale. And by structuring something that way, the property owners get the benefit of a substantial tax deduction, and they also get a cash flow from the price of the property that actually is sold for. And that, and that property sale proceeds could be sheltered as well. So I think by looking at different ways to structure the proposal of the sale could benefit both parties. Many years ago, I actually contacted Armstrong Petroleum and sent them a proposal. I never heard anything back. I probably still have a copy of my file. But there are ways that it could be done. One of the transactions in Bolsachica was done in a similar method. That, that transaction certainly could be investigated, and it could be broached. The bottom line is this, they get the benefit of a larger tax deduction from the quote-unquote appraised value, but the property in itself is sold for what's referred to as a, as a bargain price. Both parties benefit. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none. Dave, Mr. Meyerson, do you want to comment on the, on your contacts with the ports, and if you have anything else you'd like to say in light of the comments that have been made also?
I did make several attempts to get a definitive statement from the ports folks. We had some conversations, but I never got anything definitive enough that I felt comfortable putting it in the report. I will say that on a transaction about a year ago that I worked on in Long Beach peripherally, we made an application to the ports for acquisition funds, and they told us that they had money for restoration, they had no more money anymore for acquisitions. This was right in their backyard, and they're supposed to find property as close to them as possible. Now, once again, that situation could have changed over the last year or so, but I wasn't comfortable putting that in the report once again, because these aren't definitive statements. But it did seem like it was, at least in today's world, a lesser, lesser probability.
Okay.
I can't think of any other response based on anybody else's comments.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, I'll close the public comments, and is there any direction the council needs to take, or is this just a status report?
It's a status report, unless anybody feels differently than the recommendation on continuing our relationship with Dave Meyerson.
Okay, I don't think there's any objection to that. Don, did you... Don, did you have some comments?
I don't have objection. I, there's a couple of comments I'd like to make. It's interesting that Mr. Meyerson has pretty much confirmed what some of the things that I had mentioned early on about we're going to get through the development of this parcel a very substantial portion of the critical areas, and that other agencies that would provide funding for large developments are also aware of that and, and don't really see the benefit of putting large chunks of money into a site to purchase the entire site when they're going to get close to two-thirds of the site at no expense at all. So I agree with the process that we're moving forward on, which is to make sure that Mr. Meyerson keeps his ear to the, to the ground, looking for all of these huge sources of money that are just going to pop out of the air for this project. But I think that as long as we are allowing the developer to continue forward with the normal process, the environmental process, that, that makes sense. It's interesting to listen to this gentleman say that Measure M funds should be used for this and that they're just there. And when you look at the description that Mr. Meyerson has put together, which says that the next two years are already obligated, and beyond that, there's very little chance for a large amount of money to go this direction. So I, I think that it's nice to dream about a lot of these sources, but when you start talking about this large a sum of money for a piece of property that we can get two-thirds of for next to nothing, it just doesn't make sense to me, at least from standpoint of trying to look at the expenditure of public funds. So I appreciate the direction that we're going, and as long as we're not slowing down the developer by this direction, I think that we have a good way to go.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Curry?
Well, I want to thank the consultant. It was a pretty fair and even-handed report, covered a lot of bases. I think what we, I support the course of action of moving forward as recommended by staff. I think there's still opportunities that could potentially open the door for people to, to acquire here, but I think we're seeing it's a very difficult task. You, you heard the consultant mention that there is no legislation pending currently for any additional bond authorization in Sacramento. I would encourage the proponents of acquiring the site that this is the opportunity to go to Sacramento and get something that the legislature puts on the ballot that would provide that opportunity. There'll be an election in June and then one in November that potentially could impact this project next year. So I think that's the, from my perspective, sort of the window of opportunity of creating new money that could be used for the project. But otherwise, since we're not holding back the environmental analysis that needs to be done, sort of in any event, I would support the staff recommendation.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Just quickly, I, I just think it's important to remember here that this is not the end of the process, it's just a kind of a waystation along the process, and, you know, as the opportunity presents itself, we'll be open to them. And I think we're, we're not forsaking the two-pronged approach that we have in our general plan. We set that out almost three years ago now, I guess. And we're still on that path, or paths. And so I look forward to moving forward with the process. Thank you.
All right. Very good. We'll move on to our next item, which is the amendment to Title 19 subdivisions of the Newport Beach Municipal Code. Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I have a little problem with the equipment here. Mayor, members of council. There you go. Okay, we've got the title. We wanted to preview with you tonight some of the changes in the ordinance that we're proposing for Title 19, which does deal with the subdivision of land in the city of Newport Beach. Quickly, a summary of changes. You see, first two are somewhat clerical administrative changes that have to do with processes and cleaning those up, and language references. The second set, specific section amendments, are the substantive changes we're proposing. You may recall from previous discussions, we got started on this at staff level, oh, probably about a year ago. We had a couple of projects that came in, and, you know, we realized that things like using a lot line adjustment process to merge parcels just didn't make a lot of sense. We also found some areas where we were inconsistent with the State Subdivision Map Act. So we started making changes to the ordinance at that time. Excuse me. And since then, a couple of other subjects came up in the category of lot line adjustments that we'll go through here, and I know several councilmembers had a particular interest in seeing what we were proposing to do there. As far as the administrative changes, you'll see throughout the draft ordinance that we've given you. Modifications Committee, for example, went away in 2004. We've changed the term, it's now the zoning administrator that handles those approvals. Appeal period, our current ordinance is 14 days, subdivision map act has 10 days, we need to comply with that. The advisory and appeal agencies were given for maps but not for lot line adjustments or mergers, so we made that change. Again, references, we've changed them, subdivision map act, instead of referring to that state statute, we now talk about specific government code sections. We call our own subdivision code now Title 19. And the actual actions that are taken, rather than saying acted upon, we use the language that's in the subdivision map act. Tentative parcel maps, first substantive reviews or changes being proposed. A call for review, I think most of you remember that, that was allowing council to call up anything they want to talk about as far as a previous approval without having to do a specific appeal. Excuse me. We've now added that in for parcel maps, so you can bring it up without having to be a grieved party. We've also specifically stayed at the fee requirement before, there was just no reference to it, and you do have a fee requirement per city council resolution. Parcel map waivers, our ordinance was out of sync with the subdivision map act. We said you could not, did not need to do a parcel map if you were only eliminating no more than one parcel. Well, actually, the map act says you can eliminate up to three parcels without having to do a parcel map. We also have a requirement for consistency with the local coastal plan and any applicable specific plans. Lot merger applications, now this is another one we talked about previously, a lot line adjustment was used to merge parcels, we just thought that just didn't make sense. It was hard for the public to understand that, and even for the staff at times, to figure out why we were doing that. A separate application would be submitted with that. Now we're not requiring a map prepared by an engineer, just as an exhibit that shows what the resultant parcel would look like, and a deed with a description of the resultant parcel. Involuntary lot mergers, and this was one that was particularly troublesome. This was a section that was adopted by the state, I think, Jesus, I remember, in the early eighties. This had to do with old subdivisions that had never been developed, and for those cities that had those, it was a process to allow the city to go in and say, lot owners, even if you're not developing anything, you have no permit application in, we're going to make you merge your two adjoining parcels that are now substandard under the zoning code. So you'll have a substandard, or excuse me, a standard parcel under the zoning code after the merger. We don't have that in Newport Beach. There was just no point, so we've eliminated it. We just don't see any need for it. Voluntary lot mergers, here again, this just explicated the procedures, made it simple to understand, here's what we want you to do now. If you have parcels, you want to merge. And typically, it's because somebody's going to build a house across the lot lines. This just makes it a simple application, simple review, don't call it lot line adjustment, nobody's confused. Again, development across lot lines, we had a confusing section, we talked about maximum permissible development that you could have on a lot in terms of dollar figure. We've never had to use that. We have a separate provision that says if your lot was approved before 1934, as an approved lot, you can build on it even if it's substandard under the zoning code. So to make it consistent, we just took this out and put a little section at the very beginning saying, you can build across the lot line, the lots merged, you're done with it.
Wait a second. So you're saying if you build, if you have two lots on the old maps, and you build across it, that it's magically merged?
No, you, you will do the merger. You will do the merger. But what this section said before was, if you had two adjoining substandard lots, you could build no more than $20,000 worth of improvements on one lot. In other words, they're saying you can't build two principal structures, one on each lot. We're saying by zoning ordinance, we allow that. So we took that provision out. You can develop a principal structure on each of those two non-conforming lots. I misspoke about the building across it.
Well, okay, but this is, yes, you can, if you have an old structure that's built across a lot line on two parcels, and you come in and tear that down, then you can build two new ones without doing anything.
No, you will need to do a merger. You will need to do a merger for that.
No, not to build two?
Oh, no, to build two, I'm sorry. If you're not building across...
But if you want to tear down the old house and build it across the lot line, then you would have to do a merger.
If you build a structure across the lot line, yes. If you come in and build a separate structure on each, no.
That's considered a voluntary lot merger.
That is, yes.
In your new definition.
Yes, because you would have to do that to the building code anyway. You can't build across a lot line under the building code.
Does that only apply to substandard lots or all lots?
Substandard or conforming lots?
All lots, if you're building across multiple lots.
If you're building across multiple lots, regardless of whether any of the lots is substandard, you will have to do a merger.
Now, we used to have a process where there was, where the property owner recorded a covenant to hold all the lots under one ownership as long as the structure was there. Did we abandon that at some point in time, or?
That was used by a lot of cities up until the late eighties, and there were a couple of court cases, and now I can't cite them, maybe the city attorney could, that I knew when I was working for another city then, they said, you know what, those aren't worth the paper they're printed on, you need to do something under the subdivision act to make them one legal parcel.
Yeah, we must have really been behind the times because I think we were doing it at least into the late nineties from when I remember.
You know, it just depends if anybody challenged you on it.
Okay, I back up. You mentioned that under a merger, that, when I'm looking at your section L, it says that they have to provide a property description with a site map. Now, what do you mean by a site map? Who prepares a site map? Do the clerk at the office put together a site map? Or how does, how does one that's researching this know for certain that those two lots are where they are and are the size that are on that site map?
Okay, good question. One of the things before, our code said it had to be a surveyor or an engineer.
Yes.
Okay. That wasn't required by the state map act, subdivision map act, so we wanted to bring it in conformity, and the key document was the deed that resulted from the merger. So what this does is the exhibit simply says, here's lot one, here's lot two, we want to make them all one lot, and it will show you the configuration, but it doesn't have to be a record of survey, for example. You don't need to do that. The key thing for recordation is the new deed saying that these are now one parcel.
Didn't, didn't the map, when they revised the map act here a few years ago, didn't they actually eliminate that requirement for record or survey on these minor applications?
Yes, yes.
They eliminated that.
With lot line adjustments in particular, yes, they said you don't have to do those anymore.
But if you have to install a property corner, because your property corners aren't there, then you have to do what is the equivalent to record or survey.
You won't have to do it for the merger, but it's a pay me now or pay me later because when you come for building permits, you're going to have to set the corners anyway. And that's going to necessitate the record of survey. But again, it just lets you delay that until you're ready to pull a building permit. Lot line adjustment, again, simple definition, change the findings a little bit, and we'll get into that because I know a couple of you in particular had an interest in the application of lot line adjustments. And it is this situation. Previously, or currently, the language in our subdivision ordinance says that if you want to reorient your lot line from the condition on the left, you can do a lot line adjustment to result in the condition on the right. You change the frontages from one street to another street. Our current ordinance says you need to comply with all applicable zoning. Problem with that is our current zoning says your minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. And as all of you know, on the Palencia, most areas in Corona de Mar, that doesn't happen. You're never going to have a minimum 5,000 square foot lot typically. So with this proposed revision, we've added the language that said as long as the lots don't become more nonconforming as to frontage depth or area, you can do this with a simple lot line adjustment.
Can we put a further, on this particular example here, can we put a further requirement that there is no alley? Because our, or in our definition, saying it's less nonconforming, if you do that and there is an alley, then it is nonconforming because you are requiring other removal parking on the front street.
The way we deal with that, Mr. Webb, a couple of ways, our general plan policies, dealing with curb cuts, and applicable where there is an alley behind, again, as you see from the circulation on the general plan, you require new development to minimize curb cuts to protect onsite parking, or on-street parking, excuse me. Second, when required alley access to parking alleys, areas for all development, in areas where alley access exists, all development would include lot line adjustments.
Okay, but now you go back, in that situation, if an alley is there, and you do that rotation, are you going to consider that to be more conforming or less conforming?
Our definition of development includes a lot line adjustment.
Yes.
So you would not be able to do that.
Okay, so if an alley is there, you won't be able to do what you have upon the board?
Well, what if...
That is correct.
Or you, or you could go, couldn't you require like an easement across one property to get to the other from the alley, or...
As, as long as you're not...
Allow, allow a curb cut if a replacement parking place was provided, or some other solution? There's any number of solutions to achieve that that you'd be able to require.
You know, we have looked at that with several applicants before, Mayor. Problem is when you're only looking at 21 or 2,500 square foot lot, that easement across the suddenly portion of the right, the lot on the right in the second example becomes a problem. There just wasn't room to do it and provide necessary setbacks, as we did. We've looked at several different scenarios, and it just hasn't been possible. As to the replacement parking, we don't have any provision. In fact, I was going to show you that there, aside from the general plan and coastal land use plan, there's a city council policy, again, that limits the circumstances in which you can create new curb cuts. And specifically, I direct you to C1, the second phrase there, additional covered off-street parking is being provided. My understanding of this, and I'm going to lean on the public works director if I have to, is that the traditional application of this provision is that you can have the waiver and get an additional, a curb cut on the street if you're still maintaining an alley access on that same lot. You can't add it on a lot for which you've taken away alley access.
Another question, or, are you done with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you flip back to the picture there? This is something that was brought up at the last meeting. Let's say, you know, you got the guy there with the, the third lot down, you're not doing anything to his lot, and I'm assuming the alley is kind of running along the back of those lots in a lot of these cases here. Okay? So, and there's setback requirements here on the street. So I mean, some areas it's 10 feet, some places there's 20 feet set, you know, setbacks. So I mean, you have a certain expectation as the third guy down, that you have certain views or whatever, that probably won't be blocked or whatever, you won't have a building there, you won't have a, an easement along the back or the side of your property for someone to get into their garage because now they can't get alley access. I mean, you want to talk a little bit about that? I mean, would now this guy on front street, if we're in the right picture there, now have a three-foot setback on the, on the front street or a... the, on the front street, or a five-foot setback, or would it be a full ten-foot setback like you would normally have, maybe? You see what I'm getting at?
I do. You've raised about half that.
I mean, those are, to me, that makes it nonconforming to the area, but I don't know if that is included within this definition of not, not more nonconforming.
And they're good questions. I think you all need to understand.
Along those lines, also the characteristic of the street. I mean, if all the homes are facing this way, now all of a sudden some are going the other way, it kind of disturbs the conformity or uniformity of, of the neighborhood to a certain degree.
It does. One of the things, for example, we have the districting maps in most of these areas that show each property and identify the front yard and give you what dimension that depth of that front yard needs to be. In these cases, if you have a lot line adjustment in this circumstance that is approvable so that you resolve, end up with a resolved these two lots, you then have to go to a default setback of twenty feet for this front lot, front setback.
Mm-hmm.
Which then necessitates a modification typically because once you take twenty feet out-
Well, you can't build anything at that point.
You can't build on it. So typically, the modifications are requested-
But for all intents and purposes, you're going to approve a side yard setback in front street. You're going to approve with three or four feet as opposed to the ten feet that's just other-
That is correct. That is what happens. Now, the code does require that for the first twenty feet adjacent to this lot, first twenty feet on this lot, you have to have a setback that's equal to the front yard setback on this lot. But once you go twenty feet in, you can then go to a side yard setback.
How many times are you going to enforce that in reality?
Oh, that twenty foot, always. No, that's uniformly consistently enforced. We do apply that. That's, you know, the planners know that. Learn that before you learn just about anything else.
But as you, but still, I agree with Steve's analysis that as you go down the block, everybody else has a front yard setback except for this one lot. It's up close to the street, yes, you twenty feet or the, I bet are, but then you have this, they can build a wall right behind sidewalk. So in other words, you could get a solid barrier along there that nobody else in the block can have, and it totally changes the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, most of these lots like this are in areas that, that have smaller setbacks, aren't they? They're in areas that have the setbacks shown along the front where you're five feet to ten feet somewhere in that area?
No, because we have them up in Newport Heights-
Well, but the problem with this is-
Cliff Haven, where you, this same, the ordinance applies that you can still have that on the sidewalk.
We need to have some examples of where this type of lot would occur, because I think it can occur more than just on the fence.
Oh, that's why I say Newport Heights, Cliff Haven, you do have these where you've got the reverse corner.
Well, and quite honestly, and that was, you know, I sent an email about this after we voted on the proposed ordinance the last time that just dealt with the lot lines. I think I had asked in my email that we be given specific examples. There's no pictures. I want to see ones on the peninsula as well because I, you know, maybe the setbacks are a little bit smaller, not as deep. I don't know what a typical setback is on the peninsula from the building to the street. But even there, I think that there's, you know, certain sensitivities that we would want to explore.
The way, the way our zoning code is currently constructed is just grossly inapplicable to so many situations on the peninsula that it's very clear to me, walking up and down the streets on the peninsula, that there are very, very few situations with a twenty-foot front yard setback. Very few. And it's just grossly inapplicable. And we have a situation on the peninsula where we do need to be able to facilitate revitalization of the area. And we can't, we shouldn't allow ourselves to have arbitrary rules like that that apply broadly to areas like Newport Coast and even lots of areas in the Heights and whatnot where it's possible to do. Furthermore, this, this nomenclature here of front seat and side, side street, it's really one street and another street. Your perspective about what's, what's in conformity to what's on the street changes when you change your orientation. The conformity on the side street may be much improved and much more consistent by making the change that's described here as opposed to the front street. When you're in a corner situation, you've always got that issue. What's the, what's the perspective that is most governing here of what's being proposed? And so, you know, I don't, to me, that's not an important issue. And Sharon, I need to ask you, I thought, I'm foggy now. I thought you looked at that language about curb cuts once before and the exception language and concluded that this alley access thing isn't as cut and dried as was originally suggested here?
I know I looked at it, but I'm afraid I'm foggy too on what my conclusion was. But then I know that after I did some research, city attorney's office also looked into it. And I think that the advice that we received from that office was that we really needed to be enforcing the policies in the general plan and the coastal land use plan and what the city council policy says needs to track those rather than vice versa.
Well, just for my money, I mean, if we're talking about curb cuts, for instance, here, I, I wouldn't want to see a curb cut on, another curb cut on a sidewalk. I mean, I've been in different areas of town. I've been like on Bell Bow Island. I see it in Newport shores of my community where I live, where there's curb cuts on the sidewalk. And it's just, they're out of character for the neighborhood. It's not good, doesn't promote pedestrian, you know, walking. It doesn't promote parking. I mean, we have, assumably, on this layout here, along the back of the homes there, there's an alley and there's an access, and it's one cut for all these homes as opposed to creating cuts for, you know, having that one and now another one, which is creates a, you know, double cuts. So, and there may be situations where this makes sense. It's not, I mean, we're basically talking about simplifying the process, going from a parcel map process to a lot line adjustment process. So right now, we have a process where they could come and do this, right?
That's correct. Right now-
Through a parcel map process, this can be done. So it's not like we're, we don't have a process, but it's a little more rigorous process, I would imagine, than just coming in and asking for a life.
Well, I clarify, Councilman Rosansky, Chairman, the parcel map requirement that we currently have is because the lots, the resultant lots do not conform with a minimum lot size. That doesn't get around the general plan and coastal land use plan requirements.
Yeah. I mean, for my money, I don't care, you know, whether it's the square footage of the lot is this way or this way. Those lots are, you know, with all other things being equal, that's, I don't have a problem with that. In concept, I mean, again, I guess my idea of equal is different than yours. I mean, if it's going to somehow unduly affect the third guy down or change the character and look and feel of the neighborhood because this guy just, you know, gets it in his mind, he wants to flip the lots, you know, then I don't think you should be able to do it because now you're impacting other people. You got, what about the guy across the street now that's not looking at a front of a home? He's looking at the side of a home. Maybe he doesn't want to look at the side of a home. He wants to look at a landscaped area or a yard or a front patio, not, you know, a big wall of a, a house that's even closer to him. So, you know, and even, you know, the revitalization aspect of it, and maybe you know better than I do, Mike, and it's your district, but, you know, there are two lots there. If someone wants to bulldoze what's on there and build two properties, I mean, I guess maybe there are certain circumstances where they would be more valuable than one property. I could see in the context of maybe a waterfront property or, or something there where you have now two waterfront properties instead of one, and that might make sense. As long as it went with the character of the neighborhood, I probably wouldn't have a problem with it, but.
But that's, but that's the issue. I mean, for every supposition you can make and for every speculation you can make about the circumstances, I can make a different one. And to me, we need to be resident friendly with these kinds of things. We need to be not overly obstructive. A parcel map process doesn't, it's not just more rigorous, it's more expensive. And we're putting people through processes that, in my understanding, at least the jurisdictions that I'm aware of, don't do that. They don't require people to go through a parcel map process for a simple lot line adjustment. And why should we? Why should we not be more resident friendly? Why should we not be more receptive and encouraging of revitalization? And to me, it just makes sense. Now, on the issue of parking, frankly, if we were so concerned about parking availability, we should never have voted to do the River Avenue beautification project. That project took eight parking spaces off the street for, basically, for beautification purposes.
No, that's not, actually not true, Mike.
Well-
I mean, there's concerns with the residents about speed there. There's concern with, there may, we may have lost some on-street parking there, but we gained significant amounts of off-street parking for the residents there without creating any additional curb cuts.
There you go. There's a mitigation. So from my perspective, if this is done, if we lose, if we need a curb cut to put, to facilitate a situation like this here and there, and we can mitigate it with additional off-street parking, to me, that's a perfectly reasonable trade-off. It's perfectly reasonable. So, and it depends upon, in any event, what the final proposed development of the lots is. And you can't really make a good judgment until you see that.
You know, maybe, maybe part of the problem is we're trying to take a one-size-fits-all approach here.
Right.
As opposed, you know, the, the older subdivided areas of the city that have these small lots like shown in this example, or different situations, and looking up at Newport Heights and some of the larger lots, maybe we're trying to just take one set of rules and fit it across the board. So we keep coming up with these extreme examples that, and maybe we need to attenuate this a little bit so that we're dealing with the, you know, the older areas of the city in one way and the rest of the city in a different way. Because that's where the problem is. It's in the older areas of the city, in my opinion, and not so much in Newport Heights and areas like that.
I think one other problem that we have is, is we don't have enough information with this particular drawing. We need to see how that ties in in two or three instances with other properties around it from the standpoint of how does it fit within the neighborhood. But I, Mike, I guess I disagree with you a little bit about a simple lot line adjustment. A simple lot line adjustment, the process was created when, for instance, you accidentally build your fence, a foot on your neighbor's property, and you want to move your property line over. That's a simple lot line adjustment. This is not a simple lot line adjustment. This is a reorientation of the property, creating two completely different-
Yeah, but it meets the state definition of a lot line adjustment, though. I mean, in this-
I don't know that it necessarily, well, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to read it.
Well, read it. Go read the map act.
I will.
Well, we're not, we're not voting on anything here. We really need to move on, don't we? So what I would say is if you bring this back, you know, these, you heard my concerns, you heard Don's, and you heard Mike's as well. So, you know, it needs a little bit more fine tuning or a little bit more explanation or a little bit more, at least, give me two, three examples of where this would occur and make a better situation than there is today. That's what I like to see. If you can show me that, I'm all for it. But I just, taking into account the fact that there are people that live around this, and they're going to be impacted by what's going to go on either next to them or across the street from them.
Okay, so Mayor, if I understand, then we've got, there are two distinct circumstances you want us to come back and show you. One is going to be what you can do, or how you can develop the two lots on the right and provide some access off the alley and-
In conformity with our general plan.
And contrasting with that, then, what it looks like if you add a curb cut on the street.
Or an exclusion in this particular situation for areas that, that have an alley.
Well, the other thing you ought to do too is if there's any changes we have to make to the council policy, because I think the council policy and alley access and curb cuts is not totally consistent with the general plan.
I have, I have one more concern about the statement in your lot line thing about the, the section C that says a lot line adjustment is consistent with applicable zoning regulations, except that nothing herein shall prohibit the approval of a lot line adjustment as long as none of the resultant parcels is more nonconforming as to lot with depth and area. This may eliminate the procedure for minor lot line adjustments in the areas where we're dealing between two lots that are non-standard. For instance, if you're going to move something six inches into another person's property, that makes his property smaller and yours is larger, and therefore it's more nonconforming. And so you've eliminated his ability to do a lot line adjustment. And that's exactly the type of problem, situation that lot line adjustments were created for, created for, not for rotating lots.
And under existing code, you couldn't do that in any event.
What?
Under this current code, you couldn't do that anyway.
Move the lot line six inches?
If it meant that the lot from which you took that six inches, before you moved that six inches, only had, let's say, the minimum fifty-foot frontage or was the minimum five thousand square feet, because our current code says you have to comply with-
So that means a lot line adjustment, that means you could not do a lot line adjustment on the peninsula or any of the older areas that have less than five thousand square foot lots?
That is correct. That's currently, and that would be as proposed as well. You currently can't do that. It's not-
But this doesn't solve that problem.
No, no, that's, that is a new issue for us. I, that had not been raised as far as I knew. I mean, that's, that's something else we have to look at. How much more nonconforming is okay?
As, as part of this discussion too, I think maybe public works would need to weigh in on issues of utility, providing utilities and things for these parcels that are now moving where, you know, we may have sewer lines or water lines or undergrounding that's been accomplished that now will have to be kind of rejiggered to accommodate these lots or additional easements to provide service to these lots. So I'd like to hear a discussion about that as well.
Okay, we could do it again. Mayor, if I could just confirm, now we've added an issue, as far as I understand, to allow some movement of a lot line, even if the resultant lot is less nonconforming. Secondly, the issue about curb cut, do we change the coastal program policies to allow removal of parking space to add curb cut on a street?
No, no, my comment was that if we have these policies in the general plan and the coastal plan, that the council policy should be consistent with that. Those are what, those are what we adopted in the general plan, but we never followed up with any regulations to implement it. And so if we have to change our council policy to make it consistent with those, then we should be looking at that.
This is the general plan, or local, this is the local coastal program. That's the general plan policy.
And that's the city council policy.
Let's see, minimized doesn't mean prohibit. Minimized doesn't mean prohibit. You got a wording thing there.
Okay, go, go back to the general plan then. Require alley access to parking areas for all new development in areas where alley access exists. There's no plus minus. We don't have any discretion.
Right. In that scenario, you'd have to have an easement across the one peninsula in order to comply with our general plan policy, right? You couldn't take, couldn't even take a curb cut off the street for that.
Well, not in the interpretation of that policy, no.
Well, do you interpret, is there another way to interpret it?
No, that's why we're here, because that's the way it's always been interpreted.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure I understand.
Okay, so Mayor, then, in terms of the city council policy, could you tell me again?
Well, just check it. I mean, we're not doing it now.
We want to make it all consistent, I guess is the goal here.
Well, no, against the council policy. I don't know that the council policy is consistent.
Okay. And lastly, what I heard, I think from Councilmember Zansky and Councilmember Webb, was the issue of, for example, the, the front yard becoming the side yard on a reverse corner lot, and then you end up, and I think, I know you've mentioned before, you have a wall right out back of sidewalk on that reverse corner lot.
Okay. I, I need to see a little bit broader picture of what's happening in these lots to where you can make it some sort of informed decision related to, maybe it fits on that, that side street better than the other streets, but with just that lot set up there, I, I can't tell, I have no feel.
Okay. We'll bring back examples and show you different circumstances.
As well as the provision services issue that I-
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to comment? Don't rush forward, okay. No one's doing that. Any public comments on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll adjourn to closed session.